I'll just commit to hold order. We have one item on the agenda. We've got the King County Sheriff's and Police Chiefs here to talk about public trust. Chief?
Thank you, Councilmember Prince, members of the council. To my right is Ed Holmes, Police Chief for the city of Mercer Island. We're here to talk about public trust and communities and the way we can build trust within the community. Across America, there's over 18,000 law enforcement agencies and over 800,000 law enforcement officers, but we've seen in the last couple of years how a handful of incidents can really have a negative impact on trust between law enforcement and communities of color. Locally, we've been meeting with members of African-American clergy within the city of Renton for the last year. We held a very successful Teen and Community Summit in June, and we had another summit scheduled this Saturday at nine o'clock at Renton High School, if you would like to attend. At the same time, we're also trying to build a similar relationship with our Hispanic community. Well, tonight, Chief Holmes is going to talk a little bit about what we're doing on the regional level and the state level. Chief Holmes is the Chair of a working group through the King County Police Chiefs Association and was recently selected to be one of the co-chairs of a statewide work group dealing with the same issue of building trust between the communities of color and the law enforcement. So I'll just turn it over to Chief Holmes.
Okay, thank you. My honor. Thank you. So, as Kevin mentioned, Ed Holmes, Police Chief of Mercer Island, for the record. And I really am happy to be here tonight, and I don't just say that. This is a topic that, for me, I have a lot of passion for this topic. I have some very strong convictions and strong feelings about this topic, so to have an opportunity to address this body on this topic really is a pleasure for me to be able to do and happy to answer questions I would anticipate you have toward the end. So, in brief, my history with this topic, and this is the greatly condensed version, on Mercer Island, we had, a few years ago, an issue that came to my office, a racial profiling complaint. The short story is, at the end of a meeting that I had in my office, one of the folks in my office asked me at the end, said, gee, chief, you say this topic is important and all that, but what do you do for training? I mean, how do you demonstrate to us, to your community, that you actually take this matter seriously? What do you do to train your officers in this area of equity and biased policing prevention? And my answer was, one that I didn't feel very proud of, it was, gee, not a whole lot of anything other than DVD that we show, a training DVD. I really didn't know where to turn. As a result of that meeting, I was introduced to Captain over in Seattle, John Hayes, who does this training. I brought John Hayes into Mercer Island. He has been to our department every year since that time. It really helped open some doors for me to start understanding how to address this issue, how to give the community some reassurance, and how to do policing better. So, that was happening in my department, and then at a broader level, we had the stuff, as Chief Milosevic mentioned, happening in the country. So about a year ago, at our annual Chiefs Conference, I brought this issue up during the Chiefs Meeting, and it generated a lot of conversation. I said, you know, what are we doing as law enforcement leaders when we look across the country? What are we in Washington State doing to show some leadership in this area of ensuring equity for all of our community members? It sparked a really good conversation, and after that, a few of the Chiefs came up to me, from King County here especially, said, hey, you know what? Here's what we're doing. Kevin was one of them. Here's what we're doing in Renton. Kent's chief, Ken Thomas, said, here's what we're doing in Kent, and Des Moines, and Auburn, a few other cities came up, and I thought, you know, maybe we should talk, at least start at a local level, in King County, start talking about what can we do collectively to first recognize what's going on, the great work that is going on currently, and then to build on that. What are some new things or different ideas we can have? Again, as leaders in law enforcement, it is our responsibility to take on this kind of work. So we had our first meeting. Kevin was gracious enough to host it here, and it was about five or six of us met. The South, if I get it right, it was Des Moines, Renton, Auburn, Tuck Willa, Seattle, and I were there. Maybe I'm missing somebody. Small group. From that group, we recognized, hey, there's some really good things happening that we're currently doing, and there are some things that we can be doing a whole lot better. So I took that notion to our King County Police Chiefs Association, said, as a police chiefs association in King County, there are the same thing, a number of good things going on. We have a duty as law enforcement leaders to show some leadership in this area, and the suggestion was we form a subgroup or a work group within King County. So that happened. I chaired that with Kevin's help, and we have had maybe seven or eight meetings since that time, and I'm happy to say we have had, I want to say, every law enforcement agency in King County. I can't think of one that wasn't there at one point or another. Everybody is at a place, you know, where they recognize the importance of this, and I look at if there's any good that has come from some of these tragic events in our country, it is that a spotlight has been shown on this topic. There is a very different level of energy, level of interest amongst law enforcement leaders to do something about this. So, one of the goals we had in working together was, what are some things we can do, tangible things? It's one thing to say, gee, we should do more training, we should pull the community together, we should do all these things that sound nice on paper, but absent a specific point of contact or a name, a real way to follow up on it, these ideas continue to live just as good ideas, and there's no implementation. So, one of the big goals we had in this work group was to come up with areas, and I use training as an example. If we say we need to do more training with our departments in this area, then who? Who do you call? There's plenty of other chiefs who are in my shoes a few years ago where we show a DVD because we honestly don't know where to turn to. So, the document that was sent out ahead of time has, for example, again, under training, it has very specific classes, and the last page has the points of contact in there. And it goes through training and policy and a number of other things, how to reach out to the community, again, with very specific points of contact. One of the points of contact I have really appreciated is your council president, Ed Prince. I didn't know that there was a concern, or there was an African-American Affairs, I'm getting the title a little bit wrong there, I'm very sorry, I do this every time, but that there's, with the state of Washington, the African-American Affairs, and that there are other groups just like that representing different types of communities. So, knowing that that's a resource is huge. We put that, we put Ed Prince's name on this document as a point of contact. If you want to make a connection to your black community, but for whatever reason you have not yet done that, either you're a new chief or just for whatever reason you haven't made that contact, and you want to make contact, Ed would be a great person to call to get that started. So, our hope was to get real names, points of contact with the ideas on this paper, and, and that as a police chief association in King County, we could at least agree to a few of these, that we would all commit to doing. I realize that not all these will fit for every community. There are Indian reservations, Auburn has Monmouth Shoot Indian Reservation, there is no Indian Reservation on Mercer Island. There may be specific things that Auburn does with their Indian Reservation that would not be a good fit for me, is an example, but there's got to be a few of these things that as law enforcement leaders, as police agencies in King County, we can all agree to, so that if someone comes in contact with police in King County, they can at least be assured of some level of competence when it comes to the area of understanding race relations, race history in this country with policing, and how to do this in a way that people feel they've been treated fairly and equitably. So, we have a meeting coming up Thursday. I'm out of town, but Kevin's going to carry the torch on this and see if we can get some agreement with the other chiefs and the sheriff in King County that, as a group in King County, we agree to doing X. And I don't know what that is, I won't be at the meeting. A suggestion would be certainly, we all agree to a certain statement of policy, of values. We agree to doing annual training. State law says we have to train in this area, it doesn't say how often. My policy manual, I looked at it when this all became very real to me, and it said once every five years. I immediately, immediately, very quickly changed it to annual. We're doing that on an annual basis. We're going to have meaningful training coming into the department. So, I hope on Thursday of this week, Kevin can help the group identify which of these elements on this menu of options all the agencies in King County can agree to, and then, as Kevin mentioned, I also now co-chair a statewide committee we're going to meet next week, and I hope to at least suggest that we replicate this in all 39 counties in Washington State. There's no reason that we can't, as a state, show leadership in this area to the rest of the country. There's a lot of great stuff being done across the country, but we need to show some leadership, and I think we have an opportunity to do that, not only in King County, but at the state level as well. So that's, the document you had, that menu of options, was the result of work that a growing number of us have been working on for about a year, a lot of partnerships. We also, one last thing I'll say about this menu of options, this is not a list of things that we as chiefs came up with by ourselves. We recognize that we're the wrong group. If we just think that we know what we're talking about, but it doesn't resonate with the community, we've really missed the mark. So we did invite community members to help shape this with us. They actually met in this very room is where Kevin hosted us for these meetings. So, this is the work of not just the police chiefs, but also community members in our respective cities, and I have great hope for this. I'm very optimistic that this takes us to a better place, a better way, a better place in connecting with our communities, and, as Kevin mentioned earlier, building trust. So, that's sort of the introduction to this document, and if I missed anything.
I understand that. During these meetings, we also invited the trainers of Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission, were part of this process, because the luck that we can do from the statewide on a training aspect, they have several initiatives going on with the state with Director Rohr and bringing kind of a new light to these issues that we haven't seen in quite some time.
Any questions from council?
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes, Chief Holmes, I can't, yeah, just out of curiosity, is there any actual policy recommendations such as things that could provide more effective reporting of data in terms of stops?
Yeah, the data piece, we talked about that a little bit, and I want to say, that might have been in here. Yes, it's under number one, C, collect and analyze statistics relating to arrest, citation, and race. The point of contact is individual agency. The RCW, the Revised Code of Washington, says we will do this already, and we're supposed to report to WASPIC, the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, on an annual basis. So, about this time of year, every year, they send out, hey, we want your statistics based on the state law that governs that. So, we are doing that already. There's been a lot of debate and talk about race, and do you ask for someone's race when you stop them? And there's different schools of thought on that, some of the concerns we hear are, well, you know, why are you asking me for that, or if it's not apparent, if it's not very apparent when you stop somebody what their race may be, and you ask them, so what race are you? That could, there is concern that could make the person who was stopped feel like you're asking them before you decide to take enforcement action, but to the point of collecting it and looking at it, the state already does that. But again, I don't want it to sound like, oh, yeah, we do that, there's no problem. We do that for those agencies that choose to comply with that law, and it's not perfect. Yeah.
Regarding that RCW, there is a little clause in there that says if it's
Yeah, within financial.
Within financial feasibility, so I think a majority of cities have chosen not to.
Interesting. I know that Attorney General Eric Holder had made recommendations a couple of years ago that that would be one of the things, in addition to the training. One of the other things that comes to my mind is, how about the training on law enforcement's side is well warranted and needed, but what about training in terms of community outreach, educating the community members about things in particular? One of the things that comes to my mind is, when this event happened in New York with Eric Garner, then we had the Michael Brown thing in Missouri, I began to become curious about lethal force laws, and so I looked at New York's lethal force laws, looked at Missouri's, then looked at the state of Washington, and I realized that a lot of young people don't understand that, particularly when I had a Muslim woman who mentioned to me that her two daughters got into an altercation while they were driving, and they were very, you know, animated in their communication, there were no physical touching or anything, but that's just how they were communicating, and they caught the attention of a police officer, and he pulled them over, and they were afraid, didn't understand what was about to happen, and they began to start communicating in their own language. The officer instructed them to speak English, to stop speaking their language, but one of them didn't and got arrested. And so, I think educating the community in terms of what's going to happen, what it's going to look like. Me, in particular, I'm very interested in getting black males in particular to understand lethal force laws, so that they can understand that, you know, the scene is not the place to state, you know, their so-called case, especially if they're creating some angst with the officer. The most important thing during these stops is what's going on in the head of that officer, so that they don't feel like they're being threatened in any way that could escalate the situation. So what kind of conversations are you having about communicating with the community members on an educational basis to help them to understand how to interact and engage with officers in a healthy way?
We have, one of the suggestions, one of the menu options, if you will, is to host citizens academies, so that you bring in citizens from the community and basically give them, it can be an eight-week or 10-week mini-police academy, introduce them to things such as crime scene investigations, but also to traffic laws, traffic stops, our big policies, the use of force type of policies. So there's that opportunity mentioned in the community outreach section, number four of this. There are, George Delgado in Des Moines does a mentoring of young men of color program, so that's mentioned here. Seattle does a fantastic job with their liaison committees. They have maybe a dozen, if you, that might be the wrong number, but about a dozen, call it. So, they have liaison committees with the different populations in their city. I went to a dinner they had, an annual dinner where they recognized some of the good work that was being done with citizens, and that's an opportunity that Seattle takes, which is a great idea listed here. If you have people, so you mentioned from the Muslim community express significant concerns with that interaction with the police department, that they have a Muslim liaison committee, that that could be vetted or taught, and that setting or that context would be an opportunity that we capture here as a way to get to what you're saying. We also talk about develop or host workshops, open houses. So this, I think to your point, this isn't just about educating
Right.
Officers. I mean, this whole thing, I mean, if we're going to be honest with ourselves, there's learning to take place on all sides of this issue. Citizens, to your point, need to understand why it is we do what we do, and we need to understand why it is certain citizens do what they do, and through mutual understanding, mutual respect, we start moving closer together. But, yeah, I certainly don't want to suggest that we're missing your point, which is, there's got to be a way to also let the citizens understand or learn, welcome them into our world, into our thinking, these are why we have certain policies, why we do what we do, this isn't just one-sided.
I might point you at a resource that is a very good resource. I'm not sure if you've heard of the group called Campaign Zero. If you Google that, Campaign Zero, they have an initiative of 10 recommendations that law enforcement across the country could glean from, and they approach it from the local county, excuse me, the local state and federal level, and they give you specific ideas, and some of the ideas are well thought out, they're well framed, and they could be used, and you could put those in your toolbox of ideas in terms of some other things that you're looking at. The other thing, too, is that, I'm sure, I know you know that you're working with the police chief in Seattle, that they're under that consent agreement, they just did their second survey to try to measure how they've changed over the past couple of years. Are you all, are they a part of your group, and they're weighing in on some of the work that you're hoping to do?
Yes. In fact, the original contact I made with John Hayes, one of their captains, he's been to, I think, almost every single meeting. Their chief has regrettably, she says, missed some of these, just due to, they have a standing meeting that conflicted with when we schedule these meetings, but I have spoken to her one-on-one, she's very invested in this, as is her deputy chief, Carmen Best, also very interested in this, and John has been a very, very active member of our work group here. I need to say one more thing. So you offer a suggestion here, that's great. We have been clear with people, this is not a final product that will never change. This is a living document. I talked to our IT department, I said, can we maybe host this, if that's the right place, where it's on the website, where it can be updated? This is a living document. There are fantastic ideas we haven't thought of yet. There are people that would be wonderful trainers that are not listed here because they just didn't come to light until now. This Campaign Zero, I don't know that was even talked about, I don't know that we were aware of it. So that's an example of, these are things that we can add to this, and I want it to be, I want it to be out there, I want people to take hold of this and run with it and, you know, use it with the understanding that it'll change over time. Names will change, points of contact will change, we'll get another great idea with a point of contact that we'll want to add to this. So, that's a great idea, we'll take a look at that one.
On the training aspect, Director Rohr from the State Criminal Justice Training Commission, she was a member and selected to be part of the President's 21st Century Policing, what was that?
Task Force.
Task Force. And so some of the recommendations from that task force, she's bringing back to the state as far as some training opportunities, and so.
Councilmember Prince.
Thank you. And the, could you give me an example of how do you, on the conduct of cultural and community awareness training?
I'm sorry?
Could you give me some kind of example?
Q B.
Okay. Take a look at that.
Oh, thank you.
Under training, conduct cultural and community awareness training. So the names, so, for the Muslim community, I list Mike Villa, Tuck Willa's chief, John Hayes, he is Seattle Police Captain, and Mohammed Jama, he was one of the citizens at large that came in and helped us talk through this. So, those are the names, and on the very last page of this document is their contact information. So, if I want to reach out to my Muslim or, say, Hispanic, I'd talk to Jaime Garcia, and the last page gives me Jaime's contact information, I'd say, Jaime, I want to do some training with my Hispanic, regarding the Hispanic community in my city, your name is listed on this thing, can you, let's talk, let's have coffee and talk about what that might look like if you were to come to my department and do some training. So, and again, East African, Eastern European, South Asia, Chinese, and the LGBTQ community, there's a specific name with the contact. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, but I wanted to know if you have an example of what kind of cultural or community awareness training, how does a training look like?
Well, I can speak to, I mentioned Jaime Garcia, so, in the Hispanic community. Jaime has come to my department. So, John Hayes, with all the connections he has, he knew Jaime, so one of the times John came, he brought Jaime with him, and we spent a little while talking about, when you interact with the Hispanic community, here's some things to think about, here's some traditions they have, and just teaching us more about that community. We don't have a lot of exposure to some, on Mercer Island, we don't have a lot of exposure to different minority communities. So, we had a woman from the Chinese community come from Seattle and talk about police interactions in China, what does that look like? Then when they're here in the States, what does that look like? What are some of the concerns they have when a uniform like ours shows up at the door? So those are things that we otherwise just wouldn't know. And so, a lot of it is just making us aware of different customs, cultures, and then history, you know, clearly the history. The first time John came out, he talked a lot about the history, and I asked him to do this, the history of policing in America. When you have brand-new officers coming into, out of the academy, they need to have a sense of context of policing in America, especially as we talk about the black community. It's not all good, obviously. And so, when someone asks, like my officer, did you stop me because I'm black, rather than being offended and not, and asking, why did you ask me that, that there's some context they have. Okay, she asked me that because of these reasons, most likely, and then they can give a more informed response to that. So, a lot of this on our end of the training, on the police side, is understanding, better understanding why certain community members may react or ask certain questions. What is that about? Why, what is the history behind that? What's the history with policing in that community look like?
Thank you.
Am I getting close to your answer?
I mean, the purpose of these meetings were just to contact, you know, which agencies are doing what, and if they are working, like we used Benita Horn to some of the work we're doing with the city, and so Benita attended one or two of the meetings, and we offered her up. If, you know, if you've got issues within your city, you need someone like Benita Horn to come in and work with your department or your city. And so, the purpose of these meetings were just to identify various experts that we're all using as a, basically, a list of opportunities with different names and contexts, who they can reach out to, to at least get the ball rolling.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes, Chief Holmes, one of the things that I didn't see here, you may have it buried in here somewhere, but what about community oversight committees? Is that a part of the construct here?
That is not, and I don't know that we actually spent a lot of time talking about that. That is mentioned in President Obama's 21st Century Policing, I think it's his second pillar, could be part of his first. I don't know that it was intentionally left out. There are some things here that were not included, just without a lot of reason behind it, it just either didn't come up during the discussions
I understand.
Or, I know that some communities, it's a very good fit to have some sort of oversight, others do it differently, but that
If you take a look at that Campaign Zero document, I'm not sure which number it is, but it does have one of the parts of the initiative is a community oversight piece.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Anything else that you all want to add? Chiefs?
I would just say that I'm very excited about this, that I'm excited to see the level of interest that law enforcement and the community have in this initiative. When I reached out and talked to certain community members, they're just thrilled that the police chiefs are actually, and the sheriff, are taking this seriously and are actually wanting to do something about this, and to see the level of interest amongst the chiefs, it's high, it's high up there, it hasn't always been, and like I say, if there's ever a blessing in disguise, if you will, with the stuff that's happened in the country, it's put a focus on something that's long overdue, this type of work.
Well, I will say, chief, chiefs, the one thing that hardened me was, number one, no one said, you guys need to do this.
Yeah.
He said, this is work that we think is important and valuable, and we want to do it. And I was impressed with the breadth and depth of stuff that the different chiefs were doing in their communities. Ken Thomas doing Coffee with the Chief, and all the mentoring program in Des Moines. I was just impressed with the breadth and depth of stuff that was happening. It really hardened me, and it's really hardened me to see all the attendance at the meetings, and even the meeting where we had a large amount of community members show up.
Yeah.
Next week is the first meeting of the statewide group. Chief Holmes, there's a sheriff and a police chief on the west side, and a sheriff and a police chief on the east side, that forms the statewide group that's going to be looking at the same issue, and they're having an inaugural meeting next week at the state's police chief conference over in Chelan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
One other thing I would offer that, and it may be on your radar, it may be on your agenda, is you mentioned when new officers are finished up academy, they come in and creating a context. One of the things that would be helpful, I would believe, would be a context that would redefine a culture, where they can be very successful in a positive way with their interactions in communities. As I look across the country and see a lot of incidents that have happened in other places, one of the things that has become pretty interesting to me is the number of incidents that have happened with bad cops going overboard, being excessive, and being called so by their, you know, their chief, their superiors, but nonetheless, they've managed to exist within those departments, and other people had to have known that. And so, what is a good cop? I mean, is a good cop a cop that will condone the bad behavior of another cop, or can that culture somehow be incentivized in some way that can, you know, kind of weed those people out so that we don't get to those places where those bad things happen with those people that do get involved in that way?
Yeah, we actually did speak a while about that very thing. What is the culture in the police departments? And, you know, it's one thing to say, here's our policy, but what actually happens on the street?
Right.
I can say this, whenever we see those headlines, or you see a cop just do something insanely stupid, we all just cringe because it really makes our job that much more difficult when that's highlighted, and that's the thing that makes the news, when in fact, you know, there's thousands of wonderful interactions every day, and as Ed Prince mentioned, there are, there are some really wonderful programs that chiefs are doing today with their communities, some strong partnerships. So, like I mentioned a moment ago, this kind of a discussion is long overdue. We have a history of racism, institutional racism in the country, there's culpability, all you can point everywhere, but when I said earlier, I'm optimistic and excited about this, I really am. I think we're at a place where, even in President Obama's 21st Century Policing, that document never existed. Some, there's a part of me that says, how did we ever get here? How, I mean, we shouldn't have ever wound up here, we should have, years ago, stemmed the tide, we should have addressed a lot of these issues years ago, but here we are. So, better late than never, we're doing something about it, and like I say, the energy and the focus on this topic now, it's very exciting. I think it's one of the most important bits of work that, as chiefs, we can be doing, and I've said it before, I'll say it I've said it before, I'll say it again, if equity and building strong relationships with your community is not at the very top of your list of to-dos, you ought not be a chief or a sheriff. You have no business doing that because relationships with our communities, we have to have the trust and support of our communities if we're going to be effective. We owe that to our citizens. So very exciting times. I'm very encouraged by it, as is Kevin and the other chiefs and the community partners we've had.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.
This might be a good time to put a plug in for our forum this Saturday, I think following up on Councilman Taylor's question and Chief Holmes' comments. So this Saturday, 9:30 to noon, we'll have our second community forum and the key question that we'll ask the public to help us define is what does good policing look like and feel like to you? So as we start to change the culture in our departments around the country, a key part of that will be getting our community to help us define what their expectations are, which will then help us as we bring in our new recruits and continue to work with our existing officers. Here's the community's expectations about what good policing will feel like and look like to them. So it's, it'll be a great start. I'm really looking forward to the discussion Saturday.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
And if I could just add to that, Jay, I thank you for that. One of the other things too is it goes with, it shouldn't go unsaid that a large responsibility of effective policing falls on the shoulders of the community members, of all of our community members, because oftentimes people look at law enforcement, the judicial system as the fist in the glove, but it's not. Law enforcement judicial body is the glove, but the community is the fist, the hand in the glove. That actually pushes the policies, it sets the expectations of what you do. So that has to be a part of the conversation also, that law enforcement in effect does what the people who make policy expect them to do or who promote the policy. And that's the people in the community that vote for the things that ultimately end up being done by law enforcement. So that community forum should be a good opportunity to touch on that as well.
And it's a good opportunity for people to meet Kevin. They'll be probably less likely to call Chief Milosevic, they'll be more likely to call Kevin, who they already know, if there's an issue or concern. So we've talked at length about the, stressing the importance of building those relationships. I mean, it starts with that. You'll call me because we broke bread together last week. You understand that. They say, you know, the time to ask for a loan or establish a relationship with your banker is not when you need a loan. The time to do this work is not when there's a crisis. We do this work ahead of time. So if there's an issue, you call me up or you call Kevin up and you trust, there's a trust relationship there. See what happened? Here's my concerns, here's my issues. A lot of that, a lot of that's the big issues, a lot of them can be avoided if there's a common understanding, the trust, the relationship built there. So that you're doing this in Renton on Saturday morning, my hat's off to you. That's excellent.
There are no other questions from council. We are adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.